Okay, go ahead.
Just a moment, Madam Chair, I'm initializing the livestream to YouTube.
Okay. Let us know when you're ready.
Okay, Madam Chair, you're live.
Thank you. So we will call the June 1, 2023 Planning Commission meeting into session, and the first order of business is the roll call.
Chair Clow.
Present.
Vice Chair Lawrence. Secretary Smith. Commissioner Faulkner. Commissioner Lucero.
Here.
Commissioner Morondo.
Here.
Commissioner Pava. Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you. The Pledge of Allegiance, Commissioner Morondo. Pledge of Allegiance. We'll move to the approval of the agenda. Does staff have any amendments to the agenda?
Chair Clow, we don't have any amendments tonight.
Thank you. Do any of the commissioners have any amendments to the agenda? I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Lawrence. Commissioner Smith. Commissioner Faulkner. Commissioner Lucero.
Yes.
Commissioner Morondo.
Yes.
Commissioner Pava.
Yes.
The motion has been approved.
Next, we will move to the approval of the consent agenda. Does staff have any changes?
Chair Clow, no, no changes to the consent agenda.
Does any member of the commission have any changes? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Lawrence. Commissioner Smith. Commissioner Faulkner.
Yes.
Commissioner Lucero.
Yes.
Commissioner Morondo.
Yes.
Commissioner Pava.
Yes.
The motion has been approved.
And number five is the approval of the May 4, 2023 minutes. Staff have any changes?
Chair Clow, we, we have no changes to the minutes from May 4.
Commissioners have any changes? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Commissioner Lawrence. Commissioner Smith. Commissioner Faulkner.
It was my vote because it was not.
Thank you, Commissioner Lucero.
Yes.
Commissioner Morondo.
Yes.
Commissioner Pava.
Yes.
The motion has been approved.
We'll now move to the four approvals of findings of facts and conclusions of law. The first one is case number 2022-6103 Villa de los Solaris, Unit 3, Preliminary Subdivision Platte. Any comments on those, any changes to those findings and conclusions from staff or the commission? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Lawrence. Commissioner Smith. Commissioner Faulkner.
Yes.
Commissioner Lucero.
Yes.
Commissioner Morondo.
Yes.
Commissioner Pava.
Well, abstaining as I was not at that public meeting.
Thank you.
The next findings and conclusions is case number 2022-6134, which is 1864 Paseo de Vista rezoning. Any changes from staff or the commission? Not all entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Lawrence. Commissioner Smith. Commissioner Faulkner. Commissioner Lucero.
Yes.
Commissioner Morondo.
Yes.
Commissioner Pava.
Well, again, abstaining as I think I was the sole vote. Contrary to this, and I don't deem it appropriate that I vote yes.
Okay, thank you. The motion has been approved.
And the next one is case number 2023-6488, again, 1864 Paseo de Vista. It's the master plan. Any changes by staff or the commission? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve. Commissioner Lawrence. Commissioner Smith. Commissioner Faulkner.
Yes.
Commissioner Lucero.
Yes.
Commissioner Morondo.
Yes.
Commissioner Pava. The motion has been approved.
And the last one is case number 2023-6487, 3900 Constellation Drive setback variance. Any changes to those findings and conclusions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Second.
Commissioner Lawrence. Commissioner Smith. Commissioner Faulkner. Commissioner Lucero.
Yes.
Commissioner Morondo.
Yes.
Commissioner Pava. The motion has been approved.
Move on to the consent calendar and call case number 2023-6657, which is 3978 Rufina Street Development Plan Approval Extension. Mr. Escobell.
Hey, Chair Clow, yeah, this, this is Daniel Alvarado's case. But as it's on the consent agenda, you know, we didn't prepare a, a presentation, but I can answer any questions about the time extension request if you, you know, or the memo if you need.
Are there any questions from any of the commission members? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
This case, when you approve the consent calendar, so I don't believe you need.
Oh. So wondering what that was. Did every, does everyone understand they were? Okay. That's fine. Thank you. Okay, new business. There is only one matter on the eight, on the agenda tonight, and that is case number 2023-6484, 5101 Los Solaris Drive and 4822 Railrunner Road Development Plan. Mr. Escobell.
Madam Chair, members of the commission. This is case number 2023-6484, 5101 Los Solaris Drive and 4822 Railrunner Road Development Plan. Jenkins Gavin Inc. agent for Keystone Company Zinc applicant. They requesting development plan approval for 183 development dwelling multifamily development plan, totaling 226, 226 square feet of new construction. The property is approximately 28.59 acres identified as lot 9A2 and 11B of the Los Solaris Master Plan. Project site is zoned R21, which is 21 dwelling units per acre located in the suburban archaeological review district. As you can see, the property is vacant, located at the intersection of Railrunner Road and Beckner Road. There has been some manmade disturbances along the way, both along Railrunner Road and Beckner Road. I think commission has seen the road review before. This application has gone through the pre-application meeting requirements per 1437E, the E and N requirements per 1437F, and they've complied with the notice requirements of 1431H, along with all the DRT review requirements and conditions. It was reviewed by both legal and management before it came to the planning commission for review. Of the DRT members, there are 12 DRT members that looked at this application in order to provide a complete review for the planning commission and per Chapter 14 rules and regulations that we are charged to look at. The property is zoned R21, which is located and identified as the brown color right in the center. If you look at the left, the zoning image to the southwest, you got light blue, which is the light blue in Hospital Drive and C2. So you've got several zonings to the south and southwest. Northwest, you have, it's brown, you're going to have the Los Solaris Station, which is also multifamily development. Northwest in green is the Los Solaris Regional Park. You have the Phase 1, which is darker vibrant green and Phase 2, which is undeveloped, which is sort of that muted green. To the southwest, you have C1 and General Office. And that's a sort of a lavender periwinkle that was provided by Maggie. I don't know my colors. And then hospital zone, Los Solaris Presbyterian Healthcare Services in light blue. To the right, you also have an idea of the surrounding uses along with that. Estancia de Los Solaris. You have other zonings, most of it's vacant except for the periwinkle, which is also a housing development. The project was identified or was reviewed by our traffic analysis. The scope identified several driveways that were looked at with both driveway 8 and 9 as the primary entrances into the subdivision. And also 1, 8 is located off Railrunner Road and 9 is located off Beckner Road. Those will go into and then into the development. The applicant is proposing a total of 368 parking spaces where 366 parking spaces is required, and that's a requirement of two dwelling, two parking spaces per dwelling unit. They're going to have 43 garages, 183 under carports and 142 that'll be open. Staff does have a concern with the garages, which is that we tend to see garages used as storage units, and that could displace required parking out into the main area, which would reduce the parking area. So we do have a condition that is going to require them to show us how they're going to manage those garages so that they don't get used for storages instead of parking. They also did not identify what types of parking spaces are being proposed. You have three sizes, one size fits all, small car standards. That is more of a technical correction than anything. The applicant is proposing six bicycle racks, kind of located right next to the community area where the pool and the hot tub is. That's going to give you a total of 12 bicycle parking spaces that will meet the requirements of Chapter 14, and they are proposing the correct bicycle racks for Chapter 14. The applicants will be connecting to city utilities. They're going to be going from a 12-inch city public water line from both ends of La Rambla. Let's see, that is along this area right in here. This is the La Rambla easement that was originally part of, that's part of the master plan. It's shrunk in size, and that's because originally this was supposed to be a train stop. That didn't happen. And through previous master plans, that particular easement did shrink. But they are going to be putting water into this trail easement along the middle. And then from there, it's going to a six-inch lines to connect to the master meters. And then three inch to the dwelling units. The three inch lines are going to be private maintained by the developer. They will not be maintained by the city. The public utilities will be from within the La Rambla and the six inch mains to the master meter. They're also going to extend the sewer system, which is coming down this way. It's in red. And that's a 10-inch main. And from the public main, they're going to develop, they're going to go from an eight inch to a six inch and then to a four inch lines to the dwelling units. Again, internal to the development, those are going to be private maintained by the applicant. For fire protection, the project will be using automatic fire sprinklers or suppression. All-in-one driveways, IFC standards for emergency access. Gates will include opticon and emergency access. And there's going to be five new fire hydrants, which are located in red, as you can see, 1, 2, 3, 4. Probably more, I might have counted wrong, but either way, the fire marshal has provided some conditions of approval, and they're located within the technical corrections within Attachment B. Slopes are varied from 0 to 30%. Months of the site terrain has been used as a staging area, which is right along this area over here. And then you have some of these areas that were disturbed when they built the roadway. There's going to be two underground storage detention areas for the development that will manage stormwater drainage. The Los Solaris Master Plan has a pretty robust trail system. The applicant will be developing the trail within the property. There are conditions in place for that development also located within Attachment B, and I believe they're also in the conditions of approval. The area architecture is a mix of one- and two-story pueblo and territory vernacular buildings, which will nicely fit into the area with the area architecture that's already out there. And this is just a sample of all of them collectively, but you can find those also in the applicant's materials, the attachments. As presented, the planning commission identified compliance with Chapter 1438D, approval criteria for development plans. Criteria 1, 1438D1A, that is empowered to approve the plan under Chapter 14 described in the application. Staff agrees with the applicant. With the applicant's response, the City of Santa Fe subsection 1432D1 authorizes the planning commission to review and approve or disprove development plans and subdivision plans. Criteria 2, approving development plans will not adversely affect the public interest. Again, staff agreed with the applicant's response. Staff's recommended conditions of approval. The proposed development plan application complies with minimum standards for Chapter 14 SSSC and would not adversely affect public interest. And then lastly, criteria 3, if the use and associated buildings are compatible with and adaptable to building structures and uses of the abutting property and other properties in the vicinity of the premises under consideration. And again, staff agreed with the applicant's responses. Proposed multifamily complex design mimics the residential designs and massing within the area and the area architecture. And I believe, Madam Chair, that leads me to the recommendations. The Land Use Department recommends approval with the conditions of approval as outlined in this report. There's one sample motion, move to approve case 2023-6484, 5101 Los Solaris Drive and 4822 Railrunner Drive Development Plan, or move to deny case 2023-6484, 5101 Los Solaris Drive and 4222 Railrunner Road Development Plan and request proposed findings of facts and conclusions of law reflecting the planning commission's decision. Madam Chair, members of the commission, that will end my presentation.
Thank you. Any questions from the commission before we hear from the applicant? Yes, Commissioner Pava.
Madam Chair, Mr. Escobell, question about the, the actual general plan land use map designation for the area or, or Los Solaris or both. So this is owned R21, but I didn't see any mention, I could have missed it, what the general plan land use map designation for this, these lands are?
It's going to, I did not check that, but ultimately, since the master plan was, was recently amended, all of the general plan, all of the zonings for Los Solaris do match the general plan, so it would be multifamily identity residential in order to get the R21 value out there.
So with regard to the R21 value, this is a rather large parcel and R21 lots, are there many areas in the city zoned R21 of comparable size?
Um, I'm not sure about the comparable size, but there's a lot of R21s out in the city. This particular one is a multifamily that's not a lot, it's not a lot split or subdivision. It's just a, an apartment complex that are going to be rented out individually, so it's sort of a unique apartment complex for the city. We have not seen one. Usually we see vertical development, 2, 3, 4, two or three stories with the apartments within each structure. Here you have them spread out in little casitas that are going to be rented. I believe they said they found a market for that. We also have another one coming in very similar to this, which is going to be on Airport Road or Surius Road right across from the new Walmart. So this is just the first one.
And am I clear that in Santa Fe's zoning intensity is cumulative, so one could, if they so desired and if pro farmer worked, they could put single-family homes of what, five units, three units per acre, seven units per acre, 10 units per acre, up to 21 multifamily. In other words, it allows for uses subordinate or less dense residential uses under R21?
That is correct. And oftentimes you have seen that with Pulte, where they request a much higher zoning density, but their actual density on the ground is much less.
Thank you.
Chair Clow and Commissioner Pava, I just wanted to add to the, your question. The future land use map designation for these parcels is 12 to 29 dwelling units per acre. 12 to 29, yes.
Yeah, when we did the master plan amendments for Los Solaris, we made sure everything matched.
Commissioner Smith.
So that last exchange just confused me a little bit. Is there an opportunity, even when we approve this, that they would come in with fewer units? And are we, what it is we're approving, if we approve it, what is going to happen?
Um, I think that's more of a question for the applicant, but is the possible, does the possibility exist that somebody can get something approved at a higher density that comes in for a development plan amendment that can reduce that density? That is highly possible. That would be an administrative adjustment that is allowed under the powers and privileges by the land use director. So it wouldn't come to this body for that amendment unless the land use director decided to take it forward. But ultimately, if an applicant were to decide to reduce the density, the land use administrator could administratively adjust that density as long as the scope and intent of the approvals are maintained.
Chair.
The, could you go back? I had another question. Go back to the last slide. The approve or deny? I'm just, my, I'm looking at number two. There's been nothing in staff report that has suggested anything but an approval. Language in number two says we could deny it and request proposed findings of fact and conclusions of law reflecting our decision. Does that mean you have to go back and make up some stuff to, or is it there?
Madam Chair.
I'm not sure what that means.
Members of the planning commission, Commissioner Smith. The planning commission can always come up with a different set of findings than the staff. The staff's charge is to make sure that every application that comes before this body is already going to meet the requirements. Unfortunately, that gets us a bad rap, like we're in league with the developer or whatever. But we actually, through the review process, we force, you remember the rotor review, we force an application to come into compliance. And with the conditions of approval, together with changes that the applicant makes along that rotor review, if they complete, if they can complete all of the DRT comments, all of the staff requirements, all the negotiations, we do recommend approval because we have to. They, they meet the rules and regulations that we're charged to review by. That doesn't mean that you as a body would agree with the interpretations or review by staff, but that means you also have to come up with your own findings so that we're not arbitrary and capricious within our decisions. We're treating everybody the same within the rules and regulations that we have to play by.
That's in all the spare time with our extra staff that we have at home.
Exactly.
Exactly.
Um, Chair Clow, Commissioner Smith, there, there are findings of facts either way. It just, if you were to approve this with the rationale that is in the staff report, they, the findings would reflect that. If you come to different conclusions or if you come to different reasons to approve than are in the staff report, you would need to state those that they could be in the findings.
To avoid the inevitable question that I would ask, otherwise, we maybe at some point in the next two or three meetings have an initial briefing about in lieu of how it is administered, where the money goes, because I am still, I've been trying to understand it. I understand it does not help me to ask the people with questions, but I would really greatly appreciate a briefing.
Mr. Faulkner.
So so what this apartment complex has done is taken an apartment building and then each apartment is now a standalone.
Yes.
How does that not make it a single-family dwelling as, as a standalone?
Well, every apartment complex is going to be a single-family dwelling. The definition of a dwelling is any, any, any structure with facilities that contain eating, sleeping, sanitation and living. You boil that down, that's a kitchen, bathroom and living area. So even in apartment complex, you're still having multiple dwellings. They're just attached as opposed to detached.
I mean, what I'm concerned about is this, this looks like a development for single-family dwellings. It's calling itself a multifamily project. And if they do that, then they can get out of, they can pay in lieu of and not have to have affordable units. Right? And so I'm trying to, I'm trying to wrap my head around how it is if someone comes in and builds single-family units that are separate from each other. They have to follow a certain code, but because they're calling this a multifamily project, then we're just accepting that that's what it is when in fact it's little casitas, which are single units.
But they're being rented and not sold.
I, I rented two or three houses, Madam Chair, that they didn't own, and they fell into this, this other category.
Madam Chair. Members of the commission, Commissioner Faulkner. You know, we often, we often come across these types of bill, and we have hotels that are converting from a hotel to apartment complexes. Uh, we have, we've had hotel apartment complexes that have, have transferred from an apartment complex to condominiums. During that process, and they, they have to come into our, back into the land use department in order to, to make those changes. And then we will re-review, re-review and evaluate what needs to happen in order to address those needs. Nobody get, nobody just gets to, there's no bypass of that. We're going to catch them no matter what. So that's, that's not a concern that we typically look at. We, we've seen it too many times within our review process.
But in this case, we're being asked to approve this like it's an apartment building when in fact it's single, it's, it's separate residential. So it's separate units.
That is correct, but we don't, we're not going to distinguish between an apartment and a single family just because it, it, it looks different. Do they have the ability in the future to convert these individual units to fee simple units? Absolutely. Does that mean they're doing that now? No. Does that mean that we're going to force conditions of approval for some future activity that we may, that may never happen? No, we will catch them when they, when they make those changes rather than force some sort of requirement now to introduce what, where they have options at this point in time. And that option is a fee in lieu of, because they're renting those apartments and they have that ability and it's within their rights as, as a developer to ask for that. And they do have a signed agreement, which I put in the packet for you.
Jason, do you have a comment?
Madam Chair, thank you, Commissioner, Commissioner Faulkner. So I'd just like to make a quick clarification. I think we should let the applicants speak because I think this is a new, this is a prototype that, of development that Santa Fe hasn't, hasn't really seen yet. And I, I think they can do a good job of explaining that to you. Also, I want to make it clear that this is not like a, a, a single-family subdivision. It's not a subdivision. It is a multifamily project from start to finish for entitlements through permitting. It is fundamentally an apartment complex. You can think of it that way. It is. Uh, it is fundamentally an apartment complex. You can think of it that way. It is, it is no way, shape or form a single family uh, subdivision. It's being, it's being weighed for, again, entitlements and permitting, uh, as a multifamily project.
Are there mechanisms in place that if they do decide to sell those units at some point, that, and that area would they'd have to do something about making X amount affordable?
Madam Chair, members of the commission, Commissioner Faulkner, we do, there are several. You have the density of compliance requirements that they want to go condominium. They have to get that because of the new, the legislation that Matt O'Reilly put in place that requires cities to, who look at density to fill, to provide them a form so that they can go to the county clerk in order to record their, their declaration. Without that form, a declaration cannot be filed. If they decided to go through a subdivision process, then they would have to come in and do a subdivision, and then the planning commission would actually ultimately see that subdivision.
No, my question is if, say they rent these, because apartments did it. They rented them for X amount of time and then converted them to condominiums. And so my question is, is if they rent these for five years, say, they're all rentals for five years. And then the owner decides, well, now I want to sell them as, as housing, like how someone could buy. What's the mechanism in place to take into consideration that there should be affordable housing and that if, if they convert to selling the properties?
That would be through the certificate of density and we would automatically send that up chain to affordable housing to make sure that uh, that review takes place before we sign that certificate of density.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Thank you, if I may, uh, thank you, Madam Chair. I just also wanted to clarify, one of the other commissioners asked a question earlier regarding the density. And so if, uh, you know, you are approving the, a multifamily project with a, you know, quote unquote, density. But, uh, if, if that were to change in any way in the future, an amendment, I, I would, uh, send that to planning commission. If I were, uh, land use director at that time, I wouldn't approve it administratively unless the changes were very minor.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Did I ask a question of staff?
Yes, go ahead.
I might understand that currently, uh, there's no mechanism uh, that these are broken up by property, right? They'd have to subdivide all of these to, to sell them as individual units.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, Mr. Miranda. So if they were to come in and want to create fee simple lots, uh, we would have to measure those lots in accordance with our lot size requirements, our subdivision rules and regulation that would automatically come to planning commission for review. If they were to want to condominiumize the entire project so that each individual unit is a fee simple unit under a declaration, condominium declaration. We have, we would have to fill out that declaration form so that the county clerk would allow, would, would file and record their condominium declaration. That, that, that prevents them from just going to the county clerk and filing the declaration and without our knowing. So we would always know whether there's going to be a conversion. Um, if the commission were so inclined, you can always just tack on a condition of approval that says in the event this were to go from an apartment complex to any kind of fee simple property, um, that the property be reevaluated or, uh, affordable housing. We can slap that on the development plan so that it's just a note that everybody knows it has to happen.
My point would be was a, a statement made earlier that there's nothing to say that this is necessarily different from the single family, because it does look like single family. However, there is something which is the property lines. Right? That, that's really what is keeping, I just want to make sure that's understood. Even still, I think the language, if we did approve, makes sense to put that on. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Any other questions or comments? Questions, really? Okay, um, thank you, Ms. Escobar, for her from the applicant. Ms. Jenkins?
You swear under the penalty of perjury that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth? Thank you. Please state your name and address.
Jennifer Jenkins, one thirty Grant Avenue, Suite one oh one, Santa Fe. Good evening, Madam Chair, Commissioners. I'm Jennifer Jenkins with Jenkins Gavin here this evening on behalf of Keystone Homes in request for development plan approval for the Havenly Santa Fe project. So just a few quick introductions. I have introduced myself, also joined, um, we have Jim Belfiore and Jeff King sitting right over there with Keystone Homes who are here for, are hearing this evening. Civil and traffic engineering services provided by Tierra West Engineering, and we do have our engineers, um, on via Zoom. Should you have any questions for them directly? And then landscape architecture provided locally by Surrounding Studio. So this is the subject tract, um, that is located here at the northwest corner of Beckner Road and Railrunner within the Los Solares Master Plan. Um, just to the north is the Solaris Station, um, Affordable Community. To the west of us is the Los Solaris Senior Living Community. And, um, so as you can see here, the, um, our site, we are, um, as part of this application, we're doing a lot line adjustment. There are two parcels here. And then we're taking this lot line and we're sliding it up here to create the subject tracts. There will be about nine and a half acres remaining here that is not subject of this application. Um, Keystone is not acquiring that property and is not part of this particular development. And to the north is the Los Solaris Park, and you can see here, this is, um, phase three of the park that is going to be, um, constructed, I believe, within the next, within the next year. And, um, to the west also is Lost Solaris Drive. So the question came up about the future land use map, and as we already, um, discussed, the, um, future land use designation here for the purposes of establishing zoning is twelve to twenty-nine dwellings per acre. As you can see, the great thing about the Los Solaris Master Plan, it is a very diverse mixed use environment. And so we have a lot of different, um, densities, use types, um, that are going on within, within the vicinity. So there are services, there's employment, there's different housing types and, um, access to retail. So it is, um, as it really is growing and expanding, it's, it's, it's developing quite, to be a quite, um, dynamic community. So, um, the zoning as shown here is R twenty-one. Um, the property to the south that's, that's sandwiched between Beckner and Interstate twenty-five is primarily commercial and will also have some mixed use elements as well. As you can see, everything to the west along Cereus, that is the C two commercial corridor there. Presbyterian Hospital is here. And then as you move kind of to the east and to the north, you're into more, um, traditional residential development at a variety of densities. So, um, we're zooming in on the property now to see the existing conditions, and this line depicts kind of what that, that lot line adjustment that I mentioned. So we have nine A two here and eleven B, so this lot line here will disappear and then our, um, parcel, our nineteen acre parcel will be situated here. And, um, and what we're showing here, everything in blue are existing waterline infrastructure. And, um, and then the green are is existing sewer infrastructure. So we, um, we have great access to those, um, public facilities. So this is our, um, our site plan. And as we discussed, this is commonly referred to as a build to rent project. These are a hundred and eighty-three dwellings on one parcel of land. That is sort of the definition of multifamily, when you have multiple dwellings that share one parcel of land. Multifamily can be for rent, multifamily can also be for sale if it's a condominium regime. So I can build a fifty-unit apartment building and I can rent them, or I can build a fifty-unit condominium and sell the individual units. And, but just so you know, Keystone, um, they do not convert their projects to, to condominiums. They actually establish deed restrictions to, um, to prohibit that, that conversion. And so we, um, just walking through the project, our front door, um, one of our, our main access point is going to be off of Railrunner Road directly across and trotted, um, La Yubia that, um, accesses the Pulte neighborhood to the east. And, um, we come in and, um, as you can see, what the little white are all the individual units and, and all the units are built around compounds. So there's a lot about this pattern that is reminiscent for me of a lot of our older neighborhoods in Santa Fe where you would have, you know, um, lots that over time would get filled in with smaller casitas and you would have these older family compounds. It is reminiscent of that a little bit for me. And you drive in, there are amenities that you would expect in any multifamily community, a clubhouse, resident lounge, fitness center, swimming pool, outdoor barbecues. There are pedestrian pathways throughout the project. It's incredibly walkable. And all of the parking is centralized on the main, you know, access roads. So nobody has a driveway in front of their house like you would in a typical single family environment. So you park and then you walk to your home, and we have some images from another project to, everybody can get a little bit of a feel for that. And then, um, and then on the west side of the project, we have another access point off of Beckner Road. This is going to be a new, um, small public street that will stub out here that will provide future access to this nine and a half acre parcel that is going to be remaining, the remainder tract. And then we have another access point here, and then the circular, um, driveway with associated parking and the individual, um, and the individual units. And one of the greatest things about this, this project is, as Dan mentioned, there is a forty-five foot pedestrian trail and utility easement that basically bisects the property. That is the purpose for the two entrances, because we do not have a vehicular connection because there's a trail, and obviously we do not want to impact that with any kind of vehicular movement. So we are constructing and landscaping a pedestrian trail that terminates here at our northwest corner that will, um, eventually upon development of the neighboring track will eventually extend into Los Solaris Park. So this is, um, we, we are really, when, um, when Keystone was first looking at the property and I was assisting them with their due diligence and they saw this giant easement that bisects the property, most of us would be like, oh, that's terrible. And when they looked at that, that is great. That is going to be such an amazing amenity. And it creates connectivity within the neighborhood and they really want to celebrate it. So we're really focused on kind of the landscape treatment there, um, the tra, and the trail improvements as well. So this is a, a rendering of a project that they recently completed outside the Phoenix area. So this is a, a vision of the, um, you know, kind of the clubhouse and the entry and the pool and the outdoor, um, outdoor amenity areas. And so this kind of is reminiscent of kind of a traditional, a traditional apartment community. But then you get into the project and, um, one of the things we've done with the open spaces is there are these little pocket park areas gathering, um, areas for the community. And that is really what they focus on with how they lay this out. It's really about, um, increasing those opportunities for community interactions. I had the opportunity to go to, um, to Arizona to actually walk this project. And it has an amazing feel, and everywhere we went, residents were stopping us and telling us how much they loved living there. And there was people walking there, out walking their dogs, and there was again, a lot of community interaction. So these kind of spaces are, are designed intentionally to support that. This is another example of a little, um, pocket park, little green area that, um, and then you would have walkways off of this area going to individual units and individual front doors. And this is another example. So you parked, whoops, and you are walking to your individual. Everybody has a little private backyard area. They can, you know, have a seating, they can have a little grill, they can have a space for their, a space for their pet. And so we were asked by staff to do a section through the property to see how the units relate and how the, how does the terrain um, flow through the property. So as you can see here, this is the area that we pulled the section. So this is Railrunner to the east. This is, um, the backside of the, um, Los Solaris Senior Community here. This is the new road that we're constructing that will eventually serve the property to the north. So we thought this was a really good spot to, to look at. So if you look down below, this is the, um, the, the Solaris Senior Living right here. And then the terrain, that's kind of the low point, terrain gradually climbs. And then we have the, the trail corridor. And then as you continue off, you know, we have driveways that pop through here. We have some garage buildings. And then you head out and then this is Railrunner, and then you can see the closest homes across the street at Railrunner. So, um, this gives a sense of how, how the buildings relate to one another and how they relate to the, right, relate to their surroundings. So again, I can come back to this, you know, during Q and A if you have any additional question. So, um, quickly, with the site area is nine point two acres. The maximum permissible density here based upon the zoning would be four hundred and sixty-three dwelling units. We're proposing a hundred and eighty-three, so our density is at nine and a half, um, units per acre. We have a total of three hundred and sixty-eight parking spaces, so that's over two per unit. Because these are detached, they have to be parked at, um, two spaces per dwelling. So it's a different metric than you would see with multiple units in one building. And then, um, the open space requirement is two hundred and fifty square feet per unit. And which, which calculates at a little over an acre. We're actually providing, um, almost three and three-quarter acres of open space, um, which is almost twenty percent of the site. So we're well exceeding the, um, minimum open space requirements. So we conducted a traffic study. And so I think, um, most of you are by now familiar with how traffic studies work in that we, we analyze intersections. Those are the choke points of our transportation network. So if the intersections are functioning properly, everything else tends to function properly and demonstrate that we have adequate capacity on the roadways. So it's a grading system in terms of levels of service, and it's based upon how much delay do vehicles experience at a particular intersection, whether it's signalized or unsignalized. And so if you have a level of service A, that's fantastic. That means there is really minimal delay. And then it goes all the way down to an F, which is, um, considered a failing intersection. Sometimes you can have an intersection that operates overall well, but maybe one turning movement in the morning as everybody's going to work, doesn't operate very well. And so that is considered an unacceptable delay. So we, um, analyzed a lot of intersections from this project. This is, this is the list. So you can see everything starting at the intersection of Beckner and Cereus, which is, um, over a mile away. And then we go all the way up to Cereus and Governor Miles. We have Railrunner and Governor Miles and all the internal driveways and access points, um, around the, the project. And then all the way to the east to Beckner and Richards Avenue. So these are the, um, the results of the, um, of the analysis. As you can see, we have excellent levels of service. So what we're showing here is twenty twenty-five is, is what we consider the implementation year, when these units will be built. It might be twenty twenty-six, but you know, you got to pick a number when you're doing this. And so sometimes that's hard to be, um, incredibly specific, but for the purposes of the study, this is, this is more than adequate. And, um, so in twenty twenty-five, we always assume a background growth rate. So we assume that the, the traffic's going to grow wi, without this project, um, one percent a year. And so we take that growth rate and add it. And so what's going to be the level of service in the implementation year, even if this project isn't built? And then we, um, and then we look at the build condition, we'd still add the one percent background growth rate. We add our traffic on top of that to get the build condition. So we have, as you can see, we have excellent levels of service. The only spot that, um, is, it's still an acceptable level of service at Governor Miles and Cereus, um, overall is a level of service D. And, um, and really the, if this becomes some, if this particular intersection, if it continues to degrade in terms of its level of service in the future, just some tweaking of the signal timing would address it. It's really just about giving some more green time to that, um, to that westbound traffic on Governor Miles approaching Cereus and, and heading into town. So, um, so a little signal timing adjustment there would, would ameliorate that. So we are making some roadway improvements as, as part of the project. So on Railrunner, we obviously were aligning our entry with the roadway across the street. We are building a southbound right turn lane, if you're coming south on Railrunner, a dedicated right turn lane into the site. And we're also constructing within the existing median, we're constructing a northbound left turn lane. And then on Beckner, our Beckner access is not full access. It is going to be limited to ride in, ride out and a left in. So there will be no left out turning movement options at that access. And so we are, um, we're constructing the new And so we are, we're constructing the new public road that will stub out to the property to the north. And then we are constructing an eastbound left turn lane. All right. So that completes my presentation, but I did have one thing I wanted to address relative to one of the conditions of approval before I complete and stand for questions. So on the, I'm actually gonna, back in April, we received a review memo from, from the MPO. And we, and they asked us to make sure that we were building the trail, you can see here, to the northwest edge of our property, which, which we are. And they also had, had a request about connecting our sidewalk network into Solaris Station, which we were concerned about because that's private property. We don't have a right to send our residents traipsing through Solaris Station. And then we had a couple of things. We just want to make sure we were clear on what they were asking for. So we scheduled a call. We reached out to Leia and, and we, obviously Maggie and Dan, we copied them. It's like, we're going to get on it. We're getting on a quick Zoom just to make sure we're crystal clear on what they're looking for and to discuss our concern about trying to connect sidewalks into that, into the Solaris Station project. So we had the call. And, and we, and so what we discussed with respect to Solaris Station, and I think they appreciated that, yeah, we can't just stub out sidewalks into that property. So alternatively, we agreed that we would add a sidewalk here, kind of at our northeast corner, out to Railrunner. There's a beautiful trail, walking path along Railrunner that creates more direct access to the park for our residents. And so we agreed to do that. So that way this kind of went away. And we confirmed for, for Leia that we were indeed building the trail all the way to our northwest boundary. And so the same day that we had that call, we received a revised memo. She, she goes, I'm going to revise my memo right now. It's great. It was really good. So we, we received a revised memo. And the only change that was made was she said, you can connect a sidewalk to the property to the north, or you can connect over to Railrunner. The only change to the memo, it says, again, terminate the trail at the northwest corner, which we are doing. And we're going to build the sidewalk over to Railrunner. So that was the revised memo that came out like within an hour of that meeting. And then we received the staff report. And we were more than a little surprised that, that was dated May twelfth, that memo. And then we received a staff report. There was a different memo in the staff report that we had never seen. The memo in the staff report was dated the twenty fourth of May. And in that memo, it states the trail is to be constructed off our property all the way to the trail in the park. This is obviously a concern because we, this was, came as a very big surprise. And so we are not in agreement. That is listed as condition number one in your staff report. We are fulfilling our obligation, building this trail corridor that, that extends through our property that is being developed. It is our obligation and we are happy to do it. It is not our obligation to build the trail. So the night, we're already building the trail that for half of the nine and a half acres that's next door. But the balance of that, it's not, it's not our obligation. These types of public improvements often happen sequentially. They happen as development occurs. So I respectfully request that the, the memo that we thought was going to be in the staff report dated May twelfth, as that is written, as the, continue the central public trail to the northwest edge of the property. But that be condition number one, as depicted in the May twelfth memo. So with that, I appreciate your time and attention. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
I have one, one question and then Commissioner Lucero, who owns the property that isn't the nine point some acres?
Well, um, well, all the property is still owned by the current property owners. It is, it is, it is a partnership of John Rizzo and Andy Fox are the owners of both tracks. And Keystone is under contract to acquire out of the entire acreage. They're under contract to acquire the nineteen.
Not the nine.
Not, they are not buying the nine and a half. No.
That's all I have. Commissioner Lucero?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Ms. Jenkins. First of all, I want to say that this development is very impressive. I mean, it's something I've never seen before and, you know, just seeing the pictures, it looks like something that I think would be a nice addition to the community. I am concerned about this trail. I'm just curious, you know, when this was put together, was the intention to connect to Los Solares Park with this easement trail, La Rambla Trail, I believe it's called?
I mean, the easement goes all the way to the park. So when, you know, Solaris Station didn't build a trail along their frontage on that trail. It's a tax credit affordable housing community that could have been why they were not obligated to build along their frontage. Because the easement runs along them as well. I wasn't part of that project, so I can't speak to that. So our intention, so the eventual, the long term, yes, the long term intention is that this trail will continue likely when this nine and a half acres is being developed. And there are a lot of developers circling, looking at that piece. I mean, it's not gonna, it's not going to be vacant for long. And then as part of that development, they will make that final, that final connection.
But for the meantime, this is a trail that basically goes to the end of the property and people have to turn around, I guess.
Well, I mean, there's kind of a dirt footpath that is already kind of being used by, you know, people in the community. That's kind of what we call social trails or cattle trails. I mean, it's not blocked off in any way. And, but that was, the way the wording is in the memo is that connecting our internal sidewalk is an interim measure because the trail is not completed at this time. So that, that's, it says, connect the internal sidewalk to the Railrunner side path, because there's a trail along Railrunner, to provide access to Los Solares Park since the full trail connection to the park will not be completed at the time of development. So that was kind of the alternative, make sure the residents have like, you know, a little more direct access.
All right. I appreciate that, you know, the eventual plan is to make that connection. But for the meantime, that just seems like an obvious, almost like a mistake, right? This, this should be completed and I would argue that it's in the public's best interest that this trail be connected for the, for the sake of the residents in that development. And for the folks just, you know, around, around town, you know, trying to get from here to there. And, you know, I'd wonder if this were a road, you know, conditions would be set forth so that the road would connect, right? But since it's a bicycle trail or a pedestrian trail.
No, if, if you need the road to provide access to your development, then yes. But, but, but roadway extensions aren't, aren't always required. Roads are stubbed in an interim fashion. If, if it's not, if it's not a necessary connection to, in order to provide the access of the development.
Okay. I have a problem with this, especially since in the staff report, condition one, I mean, it does state that, right? So I'm a little confused on how to, to move forward.
Really confused too, as you can see. It was, it was a tad surprising because it just, it was not what was discussed. And so like, why do I have three memos from the MPO? I have three of them and only two of which I was aware of.
Jason, do you have a comment?
Madam Chair, yes, thank you. I'd like to make a few clarifications if you don't mind. So my understanding is that the completion of this trail is required as a condition of the master plan. And I believe it says it shall be completed by the master developer. Uh, but it doesn't say the sequencing. Uh, we often see multifamily projects where trails end at the property line of a project. And then, you know, for example, there may be a sign that says ADA path ends here. So we have often, I would say often, characterize it that way, you know, approved projects without these trail extensions. Uh, I honestly have to say that I'm, as a land use director, I'm agnostic on this. I think, you know, I, I see that it would be good and also I don't think it should be a requirement. Uh, I also have to say that there may be some irregularities with this condition. Uh, the memo that I approved said something to the effect of extend as far as possible past the property line. And that's not what this condition says. I don't know how that happened. I'm not blaming staff, but I think there are some irregularities. And I wasn't a party to all those conversations. Um, I saw the condition. I was like, okay, that sounds reasonable. And the applicant brought it to my attention this afternoon that they felt like it was, there was some confusion around that agreement. I just, I just wanted to bring that to light.
So Jason, are you saying that you think it's not appropriate for them to extend it?
Madam Chair, I'm not, I'm not making that statement. I'm, I'm just, I want to, I want to give you the, the facts at hand. So it's, I think it's a reasonable condition. It also, uh, there have been lots of times where we have not required that.
But there's been times where it's been required.
And it, and it is, it is required eventually, but not, you know, not necessarily as a condition of this project. But we, and also we, if I may, we've, you know, we had conversations with the developer for, you know, months on end about the nature of these trail systems. And I thought we were more or less in agreement on, you know, on the, the basic conditions that they wouldn't be required to make trails in the park. Uh, in fact, they're not required to by the, you know, the master plan actually excludes their, them from having to, to do any of that. Uh, as far as impact or, you know, pay impact fees or any kind of park improvements. This is, that's called out on the master plan. So.
Who's paying for the park improvements? The city or the?
The master developer.
The master developer.
Right. And so that's the same, that's my understanding. I mean, I, we, we could go back and check the master plan if we need to, but my understanding is that trail is required to be completed by the master developer. The Rombla from the, where the railway station would have been all the way to the park.
Commissioner Lucero?
Thank you, Chair. It's my understanding that this development will be gated, correct? There'll be like a fence surrounding the entire property?
Yes, the, the parking areas will be secured with, with, with gate. And, and yes, the, the perimeter of the site will, will have, it's not going to be a giant wall. I mean, it's, it's a wrought iron picket type enclosure.
So I'm just curious what that looks like, you know, at the end of this trail, will, will there be a fence or will there be a gate there or?
I think that is, let's talk, not in the screen. Can we get the screen? Is anybody there? There we go. Okay. So, so one of the things is, so the, along the, the Rombla easement is forty five feet wide. So it's really generous. Typically trail easements are fifteen or twenty feet. So it's really generous. It's going to be beautifully landscaped. And so along the west edge of that and along the east edge of that, we have people's backyards actually adjacent to the trail. So that those backyards as they would are, would be enclosed to provide that security for the dog, you know, and privacy for the resident. And then there are gates that provide access directly to the trail from, from, from the community.
I'm talking about the north end though, where the, where the trail is gonna end.
I mean, it's, it's, it's literally, it's going to terminate. And then, then there is, like you said, you see this kind of this dirt path that's kind of here. So it's not, this is not going to be gated or terminated or anything. It'll, it'll just be sort of where the sidewalk temporarily ends.
So there's no, there's no gate, there's no fence?
Not at all. Like I said, this is the, this is this person's backyard. So there'll be a little fence around that little casita, but there will, the, the trail will be, not be blocked in any way.
So the fencing is internal then along the easement? Okay. I didn't catch that.
Yeah, it's not in the easement. It's on the, it's just right on the edge.
Commissioner Lucero, I just want to clarify, there will be gated at the street, you know, the vehicular accents are gated. If you're, yeah.
The access points on, on Beckner and then also on Railrunner.
But it's not until here. So this, you drive in here and there's some guest parking, you know, for the leasing office as is typical. And then for the cars to access the, the secured parking, there's a gate here and a gate here. And then when you get onto the Beckner access, there's a gate right there. There's, there's no leasing or any kind of amenities on that side. So it's just direct for the residents.
Right. I just want to say for the record that, you know, this is something that makes me uneasy that a trail is not connected to a park. And, you know, residents might want to go to the park and I understand that there's going to be a sidewalk along Railrunner and I appreciate that. But for the record, this, this connection, I feel like, you know, every effort should be made to make that connection. Because I think it's in the public's best interest to be able to access a park easily on a trail that already exists.
Would staff indicate where the dispute is in terms of where does the extension begin and end?
So this is where the property ends, right, right along this area right here. This is actually the development project. This area is where the lot line adjustment is going to take place. Where they're going to take this line that comes down here and they're going to create this line. So this becomes one lot. And this becomes the balance of that lot. So that's the two lots that they're adjusting. This puts the property line right at this location. Then from this point to this point is where the dispute is. It's about three hundred feet. And this is the Los Solares Park right in this area right here.
Can you show me where at Los Flares Park where the trail ends?
Well, the trail.
Existing trail in the park?
Well, right now, this, this trail is not developed at all. It's just, just vacant land. And they're proposing only to develop within their property.
Right.
Um, and then from here, they would like whatever developer occupies this nine acres to finish it from here to there. That is their proposal.
What conditions are in place to ensure that whatever developer comes in to develop that area will?
Well, the master plan is already identified that that trail has to be developed. Whether we get it now or whether we get it later, we're going to get it regardless.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Lucero, if I may, so I, I pulled up the twenty nineteen amended master plan. And that trail, the Rombla is indicated as primary trail, sorry, primary trail by prime developer. That is the, the master developer is required to complete that trail. Uh, the master developer may also defer that to, you know, sub developers, so to speak. They, they can come into agreement to complete that trail. But I would stand by what I said earlier that I'm agnostic about it, but we have definitely not required it in the, in the, in the past. In similar situations.
Commissioner Lawrence?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I want to comment my, my feeling on the trail issue. And then I also ask one question of the applicant. Um, my concern about including the condition as is, is that it's essentially asking this applicant and this property owner or potential property owner to negotiate with another private property owner for construction on their property. Um, that's, that's my worry is that I think the trail ultimately is going to be a great benefit and needs to be done. I'm worried about asking them to figure out how to negotiate to do that construction to do it. And so that's my worry as the conditions currently. Um, I did want to ask the applicant, your feelings on what my fellow commissioners had been discussing after the staff presentation about a condition regarding reevaluation of affordable housing, if the ownership status of this property would change. Would you accept that?
Yeah. And like I said, it, it's fine because it's never going to be converted because there'll be a deed restriction. So the deed restriction is going to cover it. But if their language about reevaluating that, because, and I, I like that language actually, because we know that the Affordable Housing Ordinance is an organic document. And so how it's, what the requirements are, what the And so how it's what the requirements are, what the provisions are, how it's implemented over the years can change. So for if there is a condominium conversion for it to be reevaluated in accordance with the rules that are in place at that time. I think that is, um, I think that's totally appropriate.
Thank you. No further questions, Madam Chair.
Mr. Faulkner.
Is where where the trail is supposed to be? Is that that's an easement, right?
Yes, it's it's a 45 foot easement.
So would that then they wouldn't have to negotiate with the other property owner?
So we would be allowed to construct within the easement legally. But whenever you enter another property owner's property, you have to, you have to insure them. Because even though you're within an easement, you're still on their property doing work. And so, yes, so there has, there's always has to be a a temp, what we typically call like a temporary construction easement that includes insurance, liability coverage, all those elements. So um, so whenever you, regardless of the easement gives us the legal right of access to do it. But there are other, there are other components, of course, that have to be addressed with with the property owner.
Um, yeah, I just want to make a comment. I agree with Commissioner Lawrence that I have a problem with requiring this developer to extend that trail. It would be great for to for it to be extended, but it really seems to go with the other nine acres. Um, they're already they're extending the trail all the way through their property. It just doesn't seem appropriate to me.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
So with regard to the easement, first, it's not uncommon, and this this planning commission, maybe not this body, but the planning commission itself has had and enforced offsite improvements. That's happened across the board. Uh, the development is both the lot line adjustment and the development itself. So it involves all of the property owners as we speak. So that's that it's not one or the other. It is the entire piece of property is the entire piece of property is the project when you include the lot line adjustment. However, it should be known that whether or not you include this condition or not, whether you eliminate it or you you keep it. Uh, if you eliminate it, the nine acres will be required at some point in time when it comes in to extend that easement and build it out regardless. Uh, so we will leave it in the planning commission's thoughts to decide whether to remove it or to keep it. Uh, either way, I think it's okay.
Let Commissioner Lucero spin raising his hand first and then Commissioner Faulkner.
So yeah, if we were to approve, I just want to be clear on what that segment will look like until it's developed. So there's no gate, right?
Nope.
And so the pavement ends, it turns into probably a a natural walkway because people are going to be.
It's just that's kind of a dirt, compacted dirt area.
Right.
Well, it's true. It's definitely traversable. There's no, there's no question. Um, but it is traversable. And it will not be blocked off. It's an easement, so it is legal throughway.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lawrence.
Faulkner, I'm sorry. I know, I'm humbled. Um, so did you say the developer does not have to pay impact fees for this?
So overall, the master developer on the, um, within the master plan, we are paying impact fees. But because of the regional park that was paid for by Los Solares, there is a um, a waiver of just the line item for parks impact fees that applies to certain parcels in in within the master plan. But no, for the rest of them, for sure, 100%.
Mr. Morondo.
Plenty of times you're required to build on someone else's property as long as you can facilitate it. It could be a traffic signal. It could be a sidewalk. It could be a trail. It could be any number of things. Not to say that I don't, I just in general, as another general statement, I think the density of this plan is great. This is something that does not happen in Santa Fe, has happened in other places and is really beneficial. That being said, I don't think it's a significant financial burden for them to be required to do some extension of that trail. Um, it's 300 feet by 45 feet. So in all likelihood, we're talking about.
Actually, if I may, um, Madam Chair and Commissioners and Commissioner Morondo, um, the the condition of approval actually reads that it's not building it to this point, which is the edge of the neighboring property. It's actually building it into the park to connect to the existing trail. So, um, you know, we've crunched some some rough numbers on it and it is, it's not an insignificant improvement because.
What's the length?
Um, I think it's five.
500?
It's five, 600 feet, I believe, is is the ballpark.
Oh, dude.
And so it's, you know, this is 10 feet wide. It's basically a 10 foot wide road.
We're we're talking about a hundred to $200,000.
Easily.
So somewhere in that.
It could be in the $100,000 range easily.
Uh, 200 if it was well landscaped, if it had a little landscape to it.
Well, um, we would not be landscaping offsite because we can't run irrigation.
Sure.
So this, so the landscaping is going to would stop at the north boundary, but
Sure.
One, um, one possibility. So we, this is a utility corridor, right? So we're going to be in there doing work. So as as a potential compromise, we could create a compacted base course path that later could could be improved further with 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 the um, lift of asphalt. Because like I said, we are going to be doing in there and doing some improvements so that would create a defined path to the trail as as an interim improvement.
Tacified group base courses where I hoped you were going.
Yeah.
And and I think that's a very good solution here. Um, and I I do think we can put in language that because it's on of another property that, uh, you know, we 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 can't, it it would be provided you could facilitate that with the owner.
Madam Chair.
Members of the commission, I think that is a a very good compromise. And if the commission wants, I can work up a condition that will alter the our condition while you guys continue to talk.
And how far would it go?
Uh, I would think that we can just go to the end of the edge of the property instead of going into the park. We can deal with the park a little bit later.
Is, that's a good point. So this right here, this little triangle right here, these three of the park, which there's already a financial guarantee in place by the by the master developer to construct that. So and the easement ends at the park. So I wouldn't want to build something here that may not align with the design or how they want to make that connection. And then I would want to build something that's going to get ripped out. Sort of my thought.
No, I I I think particularly because of there's a financial guarantee, I I do think that's accurate, that in all likelihood it might differ with the park design.
So can we move on to public comment? You've had your hand up for a long time. Commissioner Pava.
Um, I think my fellow commissioners have raised some salient issues with regard to the trail. I I have questions, Ms. Jenkins, as regards CCNRs or some kind of rental agreements, since these are apartments.
Sure.
How will or how does the company in other areas govern uses that would commonly be allowed in a residential zone? Daycare, family daycare, for example, off home offices and businesses, as as I believe these could affect parking?
Um, so that is a good question, but you know, I think small home offices are are permissible. Um, and that the city of Santa Fe has a home occupation ordinance. And um, the home occupation ordinance, you know, if you're seeing customers and you have employees, you have to provide parking for them. So the home occupation ordinance itself would cover that. And um, and so, but if somebody, you know, is an accountant and they have a spare bedroom that they use for their office, there's no, there's no real issue there. But that compliance is going to be regulated by by the city with respect to a home occupation license.
Are you saying there are no rental, the rental agreements will not uh, place conditions on, for example, exist the 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 parking situation with with garages being used.
They absolutely require that the garages be used for parking. It's in the lease agreements, 100%.
Only for parking.
Only for parking. It's not a storage unit. Because it's part of the, it's part of the required parking supply. That's in every lease agreement.
Um, I will say just generally that last last and early May, we discussed consistency between the general plan, land use map, density parameters. And we had a recommendation that by all means, the the lots along Vista would uh, would be acceptable. Uh, here we have a proposal to be 25% less than the lower uh, value in the in the land use map range of densities. Oh, this is a charming looking development, and I would not argue against having this someplace in Santa Fe. I think this is the kind of thing that made Santa Fe, Santa Fe back in the day. But I see a nice chunk of R21 land. It was, it there's no evidence that there was a mistake made in the establishment of this R21 zoning. And so now we are looking at allowing a very nice development, albeit, but a development that is only 75% of the lowest level of the general plan land use map. So I'm just putting it out there for the record that um, that's even if I were to vote for this, I I I'm concerned that as we give uh, make fine words about affordable housing and commitments to density. In fact, right here, uh, this is a real compromise because yes, this area in Los Solares could use a variety of housing types, and you could probably go to the site to the general plan and find some policy to justify that. But it is.